It just won't function.
I'm going with it.
Go.
Great. I'll take it. Don't. Turn that bit, you know, this camp, I thought you were packing all the. You guys blow it down. Get them straightened. Everywhere.
We're going to this. We're going to this. I was with him. We're coming along.
You're talking about this.
We're coming along.
We're going to do a clean up. That's crazy.
I saw that I seen.
This one get on.
It should be in that door, though. If it's not in that door, I have no idea.
Good afternoon, everyone. As soon as I receive the gavel, we'll begin. Thank you.
What was got that again?
I have to call it on you guys. Happy Mardi Gras and good afternoon again, everyone. Thank you for your patience. It's now about three thirty-five P. M. And I would like to call this work session meeting to order. At this time, I would like to remind everyone to please silence your cell phones and govern yourselves accordingly. We've had our invocation and our pledge in previous meetings. At this time, I will ask Mr. Clerk if you would roll call.
Commissioner Crackman.
Here.
Commissioner Greg Young. Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner John Paul Young. Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Gage Watts.
Present.
Commissioner Blake is absent. Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Cawthorn.
Here.
Commissioner Lazarus.
Here.
And Commissioner Epperson is absent. That gives you, that gives you nine of twelve committee members present. That does constitute a quorum.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I would also ask for a moment of silence for the late Angie Stone and my fourth grade teacher, Ms. Mary Wamsley. Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Okay, at this point, we are at agenda additions. I'm not aware of any unless you have any, Madam Chair.
No, sir. I do not have any.
Okay, that brings us to citizens' comments, where citizens are asked to fill out a citizen comment card and submit in the box to my left. Those comments are limited to three minutes, and I will deliver the requests that are in there now. It appears that we have two requests.
Okay, the first comment card I have is Mrs. Jean Glover.
Good evening, Madam Chair and President, members of the Commission. John Glover, ninety-one hundred Walker Road, yeah, Walker Road, apartment two seventeen, Shreveport, Louisiana, zip code is seven eleven eighteen. I rise to ask a question with regards to under new business, legislation eleven point two, where you're asking to advance ordinance, ordinance sixty-five twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. My first question with regards to this is who is or what is the Shreveport Classic? Number two, is it considered an NGO? And if it is an NGO, was it not governed by the same rules as the NGOs who were possibly approved for the twenty twenty-five budget? Are we going outside of our normal process in order to address this? Just a question I needed to, or questions I needed to have some consideration given to. Two, I had mentioned, I believe it was at our last meeting, with regards to the Head Start Fund. And I think things had gotten to the point where they were taking the direction away from the question, asking what kind of funding were we going to be being addressed? Where was the funding coming from? Were there grants or whatever, fourteen point two, ordinance number sixty-five twenty was going to address? If it is feasible between today and Thursday, I'd like to have those questions answered. I really would like to know, you know, these are, we're in critical times with regards to funding. And definitely, we want to know that since you do have a process in place for your NGOs, if you are walking outside of those or the scope of that, what is it that warranted that walk outside of it? And if we're going to not be good stewards in maintaining a process you all agree to. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan Cor.
Good afternoon to my fellow citizens and my leaders of the city. I'm here today to plant seed. I have such a passion for this project, and it's called the Friendship Trees and Edible Garden Project. So I'm seventy-eight, so I didn't try to memorize this, so if you'll bear with me, I'll just read it. Tottenham England has been proving this concept for a number of years, since their first seed were spread in twenty oh eight. We can see from the bountiful harvest of this growing movement what this can become. And there is an address here, it's a TED Talk, I don't know how many of you see TED Talks, but I love them. And this was done a few years back, I saw it, and it's just been in my heart ever since. One of the things that one of the founders said is that food is the one language that unites us all, whatever our age, income, culture, or ability. If you eat, you're in. So we all eat, so we're all in. And I thank John Paul for all of your work in this. I met with one of the Shreveport Green people the other day, and I actually feel like I'm hanging on to the back of the mobile van now on the bumper, because they are doing so much to help our city grow with green. And what if we formed a growing collaboration between all the people that should be interested in this, which is really all of us, but the federal, city, state, neighborhoods, the neighborhood associations, Shreveport Green, Keep Bossier Beautiful, On and On, schools, churches, and all of our park areas, we could have food trees, nut and fruit trees planted. Now, yes, they have to be maintained, but I feel like we can mobilize our people enough to get really interested and involved in this. They're certainly doing it in other places, and I think we're doing a lot, but we can do a lot more. There's a lot of retired people, a lot of people that just spend their time on things that are not benefiting us or them. So let's try to see if we can get a shift going here to really plant a lot more. And I put some dates on here that are coming up, including Love the Boot, which is a Louisiana initiative through the tourist bureau, that they encourage us to, and many of you have been in projects like this before, encourage us to pick up litter and to plant and to make it a healthier environment for all of us. Earth Day, Day of Caring, what if we planted trees for our moms and trees for Father's Day and new babies being born? There's so many occasions to plant trees. Hopefully, the cities of Shreveport and Bossier, through our Parks Association, through all the entities that are involved in our community working, will join together in an effort that is more just head start away. Let's, let's get busier this spring especially. I'm seventy-eight, this is one of the things I'd like to see in my lifetime, just blossom and bloom and keep on growing. There's another website, there's a big, big group internationally that are planting a tree and trees.
Ms. Cor, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner John Paul Young to extend for one minute. It's been seconded by Parliamentarian Commissioner Victor Thomas. And if that passes by acclamation, everybody's good, we'll allow you to finish your statement. You have about another minute left.
Welcome to a new greener world, growing in friendships, because friendships grow in gardens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, that brings us to visitors. We have no scheduled visitors today, so we can move forward to reports, where we have the admin report, which is attached.
Thank you. Mr. CEO.
Yes. Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Um, we just want to let you all know that the Cattle Parish employees will participate in Love the Boot Week. We will participate between April third and April seventh. Love the Boot is Louisiana's annual project to help clean and beautify our state, and they like events in all sixty-four parishes. And part of our grant that we received for the trash reset, because we did agree to participate in that event, so we will be participating. Tomorrow is Mardi Gras, and happy Mardi Gras. We have placed at your station some Cattle Parish specific beads for your pleasure. The juvenile detention update, we have nineteen in detention, two seventeen-year-olds, three in OJJ, twenty-five CCC, and four hundred fifty-three probation cases. And I will now allow, ask our parish attorney, Ms. Donna Frazier, to introduce our newest addition to our team.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I would like to take this time to introduce our new assistant parish attorney. This is Sitheria Jernigan. Ms. Jernigan is a native of this area. She's a graduate of Houghton High School, Dillard University, and Harvard Law School. She has spent several years, of the last several years, at the U. S. Attorney's Office for the Western District of Louisiana. And prior to that, she has an extensive history of litigation with law firms on the East Coast. So we are very excited to have her and welcome her and her expertise to our office, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Welcome, Attorney Jernigan. At this time, we would like to yield the floor to you, if you would like to have any remarks.
Thank you. That was very generous and kind of you. I appreciate the welcome that you all just displayed to me. I'm also grateful to Ms. Bryan and Ms. Frazier for giving me an opportunity to join their ranks, and hopefully I will be a contributing valuable member of the team. As she indicated, I am originally from Louisiana, northwest Louisiana is my home, born and raised, attended undergrad in New Orleans at Dillard University, and spent several years away, but eventually, I think as most of us do, we find our, I found my way back home. And I've spent the vast majority of my legal career as a government employee, and I hope to be able to continue in this new chapter, working for Cattle Parish and doing the best that I can for the benefit of the citizens. So thank you. I look forward to working with all of you.
Awesome. Thank you.
We don't have our speaker deal on.
It's not working?
No.
The boards are not working, Mr. Clerk. If you would, if you would like to speak, just please signify by raising your hands, and we'll create a list. See, Commissioner Roy Burrell has his hand.
I just wanted to welcome her again, after we saw her in committee and she saw how we, how we acted, I was thinking she was ready to leave. But it looked like she's hanging in there, so welcome onboard. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Did you not hear that she was from the Department of Justice?
That's what I heard.
This is lightweight. Mrs. CEO, that it?
Yes, that concludes the administration report. We'll take any questions that you may have.
Okay. And Commissioners, with any additional questions, comments to administration, C. nine.
Okay, would you like to move forward to commission remarks?
Yes, anyone on for communicates, reports? Commissioner Cawthorn, Commissioner Gregory Young will be second.
Thank you, Madam President.
And third, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to announce that the Southern Hill Business Correction Neighborhood Association will be having a meeting this afternoon at six, and I will be speaking there as well. In addition to that, on the fourteenth of this month as well, the Southern Hill Business Association will be having their annual bowling, I don't know what you call it, gala, I would call it, and which some of the members around this horseshoe will be participating as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to give us an update about personnel policy?
Thank you. Personnel policy and procedures. The thing is, we had a meeting today. We looked at the bylaws and some other things. In addition to that, we'll be coming back in the next couple of weeks to finalize and solidify some things that we will be possibly presenting to the citizens at some point in the very near future. But the most important thing we were able to address today was looking at some things that have been recommended by the previous bylaw committee that we selected, and the most important thing is going forward is that, just getting on one accord, all of us around this horseshoe as we look at the policies and procedures, personnel matters going forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Cawthorn. Commissioner Greg Young.
Thank you, Madam President. In our Economic Development Committee meeting today, we, we placed four of our advisory board members for our Family Entertainment Advisory Board. We have one more slot to fill, and we felt that it was incumbent upon us to solicit folks who were very enthusiastic about this mission, to brand our community, and to essentially explore the, our quarry, and mine our quarry for this enormous talent that is otherwise lying dormant within our community in the field of dance, music, sing, song, and other forms of entertainment. And I feel that we've made some tremendous progress today, and hopefully, before the month is out, we'll essentially have our mission and parameters complete. And I look forward to, to the full support and participation on behalf of this commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Gregory Young. I have Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Juvenile Justice and Related Services Committee met today. Director Randall came by and gave us a very good, excuse me, a very good report as relates to our juvenile services and detention, where things are looking up for us in that area, and I'm so excited about that. One thing that we did talk about was truancy, and it was good to continue that conversation after we had the intergovernmental meeting, which truancy was a big topic of discussion that day. So I think we all can agree that it's important to make sure that children are in school and learning, and they're getting everything that they need throughout their day, and they're not at home with idle minds, because we know what can happen with idle minds. We also talked about fathers on the move who visited us before, hoping to continue that conversation, and hoping to be able to partner with that organization to help fathers in this area be the very best that they can. I've noticed, being in education, the more male figures that you have in the building, the more the children kind of tend to have a respect for their authority. Not that they don't respect women, because they do, but you know, sometimes, you know, another voice is needed. So I think just as the dynamic is in the home, that two parents seem to be good for a child. We, we need to have that dynamic in the schoolhouse as well. We need to have it everywhere that we can have it. I was raised by a single mother, but a lot of the things that I've learned came from the men at church, men in the community that helped me out. And so we need to make sure that, that we can try to support that initiative, if at all possible. So we'll be looking to hopefully have another meeting real soon to move those initiatives forward, and just looking forward to having a good year with Juvenile Justice and Related Services. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Stefan Jones. I don't see any other Commissioners on the board to speak. Okay. No one else? Okay, next item, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, the next item would be our president's report.
Okay. Once again, I would like to say Happy Women's History Month to all of the women who are here and who are listening and or watching us on our meeting today. It is a very unique time for us as women who are continuing to shatter and break barriers around the globe, and we are grateful to be able to celebrate that. We believe that celebrating greatness begins more greatness, and we're looking forward to celebrating many accomplishments throughout this Women's History Month. As you know, in the past, we've always had celebrations here in the chamber. We plan on still honoring those women, so as always, I engage my colleagues to participate by submitting those women's names. And we're looking also into doing an off-site celebration this year, with more details to come at the end of this month, when we culminate this Women's History Month. In addition to that, I would like to ask for, Mr. Clerk, if you would, to prepare a resolution for Mrs. Mary Wamsley, who was an educator for over thirty years. She was the wife of Mr. Hugh Wamsley. And I'm so grateful that we were able to spend Valentine's together a couple of weeks ago. She has always been an asset to our community, and I'm so grateful that I was able to reconnect with her over the last ten years. And as I stated in the beginning of our meeting, she was my fourth grade teacher. And as fate were having, we were reconnected because of Cattle Parish Commission. She touched countless lives during her tenure here on God's beautiful earth, and I just pray that her beautiful soul would rest until we meet again. There was another great woman who passed over the weekend, who was the first female, a part of the first female rap group, who was Mrs. Angie Stone. And a lot of you may know the song Ring Ding Dong by Dr. Dre, but before Dr. Dre, there was Angie Stone. You may remember her from Fly Brother or Normal Rain and It's Cloud, and Finding DeAngelo, who took the airwaves by surprise with his song and video, How Does It Feel? She definitely left her footprint in the sand, and she will be missed on this side. Prayers to all of the families who are suffering loss, and God comfort their bereaved hearts. I would like to address some of the comments from the citizens that were made today about the Shreveport Classic, and to give more information about it. That is a college football game, and as we know, it is a huge economic driver for college football games in any area, but especially for us here in Cattle Parish. This Shreveport Classic is a game between Gremlins State University and Langston, and these are not NGO fundings. This is economic development funding. And I just want to also go on record that we know that at this current time, that there is a lawsuit that is pending. I just want to make sure that we understand that this is not something that is reflective of the Cattle Parish Commission, and that we, as Commissioners, as Cattle Parish Commission, value the collaboration with the city and hope to continue our partnership in the future. We've worked together, and we're looking forward to continuing to work together to improve the lives and the quality of life of all of our citizens across Cattle Parish. And I believe that that would conclude my report at this time.
Madam Chairman, may I tag on to something you said, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Remember, if you need to speak, you're not on the board, so it's okay if you get my attention or Victor to let me know that you need to speak.
Thank you. I just wanted to express shared grief with you on the loss of Mary Wamsley. My wife loved her dearly. They were, they were on the altar guild together, served on the altar guild together at church, and they became very close. And we both hated to see that loss, and my wife in particular was, was struck by that occurrence. So thank you for bringing her name up. Thank you for allowing me to share that with you.
Thanks, sir.
Would you like to move forward at this?
Commissioner Gregory Young.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President. I would be remiss if, if I didn't just publicly offer my sincere condolences to the family of the young man who apparently was killed walking out on our twenty a couple of days ago, and an eighteen-year-old struck him. One of my professors from Louisiana Tech asked me to meet with him several years ago, that he had expressed an interest in running for mayor. And the young man was, he was very, very young and very impressionable, and I made him over at Kane's over there off of King's Highway. And I know that, well, I don't know, you know, what precipitated his sudden demise, but it's just really sad. Anytime you see a young person that even dare get into this arena. You know, when folks ask me sometimes, what is it like to be in this political arena? And of course, I have different iterations, I guess, based on how I feel on that particular day, but I know, you know, part of my experience has been similar to, if you can imagine, twenty people trapped inside of a telephone booth, and everybody's got a razor blade, and everybody intends to use it. Sometimes that's how I feel that this space is like, and I would encourage anybody who worked for the administration, or anybody who have a job around politics, it'd be smart to try to just do your job and stay out of politics, because most of the time, this is not very rewarding. I know that my acumen in coming into this space was not about achieving any particular success for myself, because I believe that God didn't call me to be successful, He called me to be faithful. And, and so, you know, I just feel a certain kind of way when I see a person get into this arena. And I'm not here to suggest that any of its experiences, running for mayor contributed to his demise, but it was the space that I met him in when he was pursuing that. And so my heart goes out to him and his family, and my, my heart goes out to anybody who ventured getting involved in this arena. And thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Young, for sharing that information with us, and our prayers and condolences are definitely with his family. Commissioner Victor Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to share my condolences for the family of Ms. Wamsley. Having been elected and serving, she was very welcoming to all of us, not only just myself, but she's definitely going to be a loss, and I'm definitely going to miss seeing her in our different events. Also, with respect to what Commissioner Gregory Young was speaking of, he's referring to Mr. Darrell Ware the second. If you remember, Darrell Ware did enter into the mayor's race previously, and it is much a loss to our, to our, to our generation. Mr. Ware, not only having the courage to run for mayor, but he's also has been very involved in many civic organizations and many civic efforts. His loss is going to be a huge detriment to our community, and I want to thank you for bringing that up. Thank you so much, Commissioner Young, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Let's see any other Commissioners on the board. Just wanted to add to my president report to, to thank Mrs. Roxanne Johnson for the placard that you see displayed that says, Madam Chair, I thank you for this beautiful gift, and you are a phenomenal woman, and I appreciate you.
Okay, and we'll move forward to, we have no old business, business scheduled today, so the first item under new business is to consider advancing the introduction of ordinance sixty-five twenty-three of twenty twenty-five. That is an ordinance establishing a sales tax within the boundaries of the I forty-nine North Corridor, Economic Development District, and. Economic Development District in connection with the pilot agreement with Edgemont Holdings LLC.
All right. I see, I'm watching your board. There is a motion by Commissioner Stefan Jones, and it's second by Commissioner Victor Thomas. Commissioner Jones, would you like to speak on your motion?
I'll yield to the author.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, thank you, Commissioner Jones, for your yield. Um, having served on the Long Range Planning Committee, um, previously, um, on last year, um, I felt it necessary to revisit this item. Um, I felt that the details of this plan were misrepresented to this full body. Um, I think it's incumbent of us, um, incumbent of us to address debt management. Um, and I am, for one, not in favor of carrying on a balance across ten years. Um, I would like to say that, um, us doing this, uh, thereby exhibits a return on the investment of our taxpayers, um, allowing us to provide the necessary services that are not only beneficial to the citizens of District One, but also to the entire parish. Um, I understood that there was, um, comments that were made regarding this, um, previously, but, um, I think by us not establishing this, this, um, sales tax in a proper, especially when it was already agreed upon, when these funds were, um, utilized to establish this Economic Development District. I think it's very important for us to be able to establish this tax so that we can not only carry this burden across ten years and two administrations, but also we can return this investment back to the citizens and also provide this property back to the parish tax rolls. Um, and I'll yield to administration if they have any comments that they'd like to, um, make regarding this.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As Commissioner Thomas said, this is a TIF that you all, um, previously established. Um, we did not fund the TIF, so what you're doing now, would, if you approve this initiative, you would actually fund the TIF and allow, um, the investment to be, the, uh, the entities' investments to be paid off quicker, and, uh, these properties to go back on the tax roll. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Madam President.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Carthay.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Ms. Brand, can you explain what a TIF is to the general public, please?
Uh, TIF, I think, stands for Tax Incremental Financing. What this does is, um, a local, uh, government can set up a TIF district whereby only properties, or you can do properties, or you could do one specific property. In this case, it's one specific location where you charge a sales tax, or, or it could be a property tax. In this case, it's a sales tax that is, um, higher than, um, the other sales tax in order to pay for, uh, that establishment or economic development initiative. Um, that's what the City of Shreveport established at the, at the mall, when they set up a, a, a TIF there. And, and you go there and you, you pay a higher tax in certain locations within the mall to cover the renovations of that mall. Um, you all set up, you all set up a TIF in the, uh, Amazon area in order to cover, uh, beautification projects in that area, and you used, uh, property taxes, um, to fund that particular TIF. Um, so for the general public, anyone that would shop at just that store, our overall sales taxes aren't going up. It would just be in that particular location.
Okay, and second, my second question would be, what would be the difference between if we, if this, uh, was to be approved versus staying at the current, uh, situation?
If you approve this, this allows us to, um, get the property back on the, uh, tax roll, uh, quicker, start paying property taxes, um, and get the investment, because, uh, we allow the, uh, we agree to, um, allow the entity, uh, to, um, recoup, uh, their investment into the property.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, basically, a vote for is basically doing what we agreed to, we who, whoever was sitting around in the horseshoe at that particular time, not necessarily us, but whoever agreed to it at that particular time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carthay. Commissioner John Paul Young.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Attorney Frazier, could you clarify for me, uh, more specifically what Commissioner Carthay asked? Did we have an agreement with this person to have this sales tax in place? And was that agreement in writing?
Commissioner, we did not have a written agreement, um, at the time to, to, um, put this tax in place, but it was discussed that that was how the, um, how the return on investment would be funded, because I believe, uh, the taxpayer basically fronted the money for what is supposed to be a parish road, or the road going to that area. And so that was discussed as to, to be the method of repaying it.
And so, and there was agreement, uh, verbally, or, uh, merely discussion?
The TIF itself was approved. So I believe that, um, once the TIF was approved, and that was discussed in connection with approval of the TIF, I think, um, that was enough of an inducement to get him to go ahead and front that money. Whereas if that had not been discussed and the TIF had not been approved, he probably would not have done that.
So are, are you of the opinion that, um, the property owner in question relied upon our claim that we would, uh, institute this tax? That he acted in reliance upon that?
I, I do think there was reliance on that, yes.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, thank you. So in my, in my view, that, um, gives us at least a colorable contractual obligation to follow through with what we said we would do. Thank you.
Okay, and, um, just for the record, your board should be working. So if you would like to get on board, um, you can try to get on. And if you have any issues, just let me know. Commissioner Roy Barrell.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. My only question is, would this be a benefit to the parish or not?
Yes, sir. You've, you've already determined that it would.
Done deal.
Thank you. And Attorney Frazier, you've already spoken, correct? Yes. Commissioner Chris Crackman.
Yeah, this is the same exact ordinance that we visited last year, or earlier this year, whenever it was. In long-range planning, the developer was here, um, and we all didn't, it didn't make it out of committee.
A point of clarification, it passed, it passed out of committee without Commissioner Crackman's vote.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Point of order.
It didn't pass out of the work session. Um, this station has been there for roughly three years. They're very successful. They're already getting plenty of benefits, uh, from the parish. From the, I, I believe they're getting a property tax abatement, correct?
Yes.
And this would return, return that to the tax roll in five years sooner, is my understanding. Four to five years sooner, off the backs of the citizens that live in the town of Houston, or excuse me, the village of Houston. And that's what we talked about then. Uh, this is in my district. I did talk to the mayor of Houston. I talked to the developer. I talked to the developer, uh, the following day, which was a Tuesday. And he understood our, our outcome. And what he said to me was, it didn't hurt to ask. So, and it's my understanding that that station makes two million dollars a year, something like that. Uh, they don't need, uh, the incentive, but they would like it if we would give it to them. Now, this is in my district, and when it came up the first time, we all spoke in length. When Todd Hopkins was in the seat, everyone spoke in length about it with the developer, with the mayor, with this commission. And it did not make it past this commission once. And I would appreciate if everyone would vote no to this for the citizens of Houston, because it is a sales tax at a filling station that is the only place they have to go. Anywhere else is almost half an hour away. Thank you.
Commissioner Victor Thomas.
Thank you, Madam, um, President. Um, I would also like to clarify that this station has only been open for twelve months. Once again, um, that's a part of a, a lot of the misrepresentation, I feel, has been presented for this. Um, I also, once again, do not think that it's incumbent upon, on us for us to leave a debt across two administrations when we have the opportunity to return this back to the, to the tax rolls. Not only that, but returning that property back to the tax rolls allows us to be able to provide those services that District One, the citizens of, of Austin, that they specifically rely on. Um, with that, I have nothing else to say, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Gregory Young.
I'll put the question.
Second. Okay, the question has been called by Commissioner Gregory Young, second by the chair. Please vote. Calling for the question stops discussion on all matters relevant to this issue. I can't vote. But I am in the affirmative.
Okay, we will record your vote as such, and that motion does pass with nine in support, one in opposition.
Just be clear, I was calling for the question.
Yes, that's correct.
So you'll now be voting on the advancing of ordinance number sixty-five twenty-three?
And I am in affirmative, yes.
Okay, one moment.
I'm sorry, I was away from the microphone, but for the record, that motion carries with seven in support, three in opposition, and two absent. Uh, that brings us to the next item, which is to consider advancing the introduction of ordinance sixty-five twenty-four of twenty-twenty-five. That's an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Oil and Gas Fund and Economic Development Fund to provide an appropriation of a hundred thousand dollars for the Shreveport Classic, and otherwise provide with respect there too.
It, well, I'm moving, but it's being moved by the chair. To advance to Thursday? I can't see it. I'm sorry. We have, I have nothing over here, all the way out. I have a motion. Um, I see a different motion here. Everybody, we'll do it by hand. I have this, and I'll go by this one.
I'm sorry, if you'll hold just one minute, I'm just resetting this. There was an update to these while y'all were in the meeting, and I apologize, it seems to have affected your, should be working correctly now.
Okay, so we have, um, a motion by Commissioner Stefan Jones, and second by Commissioner Victor Thomas. Commissioner Jones, would you like to speak on your motion?
I will yield to you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. As I stated earlier in the president's report, this Shreveport Classic is to provide an appropriation of a hundred thousand dollars for the Gremlin State University and Langston game that is slated to be held here in Shreveport on August thirtieth, which is Labor Day weekend. Um, this is one of the organizations, well, one of the events, I should say, that we've discussed in the past about having something continual that will benefit Shreveport holistically, Cattle Parish holistically. This is something for the entire parish that is slated to bring huge economic driving to our area. Um, they have promoters who have promoted the State Fair Classic in Dallas area, and we all know how successful that is, because many of us travel to those games. And this is a way for us to provide an appropriation, um, to this classic, and I ask for your support. Commissioner John Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. I'm just wondering why, why, why this, uh, request isn't going through the Economic Development Committee?
Uh, Commissioner, I will yield to, um, administration, um, on this one. This is an appropriation request, much like any of the other organizations, but I'll yield to you, uh, for any additional comments about the introduction of this ordinance.
Commissioner, I guess we have a requirement that it goes to the Economic Development Committee. We got a request for it. Um, I do believe your rules allow, um, a mid-year for economic development appropriations. Um, I think, uh, the part of the request related to the fact that, uh, you had put aside ARPA money for these type of events, but you know, ARPA, um, events had to, or ARPA appropriations had to be, um, signed by, the contracts need to be signed by twelve thirty-one, so, um, we're using the Oil and Gas Fund, um, in economic development in order to, um, appropriate, uh, for this event.
Well, I understand that there are occasions where we accelerate, um, an event and, uh, take it out of the process, out, out of the true, um, pre-existing Economic Development Committee process. But I think it's still, we still have plenty of time to take this through the process.
Oh, the, uh, no, with the, the, part of the reason for the, um,
Is this request coming from, from, uh, administration?
No, we worked with the Sports Commission. So part of the, the request is that the fact that, uh, in order to plan for the event and know what the budget may be and that type, they, they need to know whether or not, uh, Cattle Parish would be, um, contributing these funds. I think the, the question that was raised to us was whether or not those funds were still available, um, that we had previously. And so my comment to them was that, um, it had to go back through the process because those funds essentially, you, we didn't, um, sign a contract for, and, and there was some question whether or not it even would, uh, a particular event would, uh, apply. But we could have possibly given monies to, um, to the Sports Commission, but we didn't do either one of those. And so the Sports Commission contacted us to see whether or not monies were still available. Um, we say you have to go back through the process. They want to be able to have, to know what the budget is in order to plan for a bit. I know August sounds like it's pretty quick. Um, I mean, a long time away, but when you're planning an event of that magnitude of size, they need to know.
They want to know by August, is that what you're saying?
No, the event is actually in August. They're trying to have the information as to whether or not they can count this, these funds in their budget when they're planning the events that will happen in our community.
Um, thank you, Madam Administrator. Um, Madam President, I'll yield here shortly, but I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to this event. I think that these events do bring a lot of people to town. I would feel much better if we saw an economic development, an, an economic impact study done prior to the, prior to making this decision. Um, it just seems like the prudent thing to do. And I don't want necessarily the Sports Commission's schedule to drive our schedule. I think we still have plenty of time to make this, make this decision in a prudent way, uh, before they would need the, the commitment on the funds. So those are my thoughts. I may, I may come back and make a, uh, subsequent motion if, if it comes to that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. I just would like to add to that, um, and as it was mentioned, that it is on a time schedule. Um, and I do know that we do have our own schedule of time of how we allocate funding. But this is, um, I would encourage us to support this initiative. Um, I do believe that we do have some data, um, on the economic impact through the Shreveport Sports, um, Commission that we should be able to get to you if we can advance this to Thursday.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Roy Barrell.
Thank you, Madam. I, I guess as a point of clarification, um, this is not the first time the Shreveport Classic been held here, right?
It's been many years, many years.
Okay, I guess my question is, if, if it has, uh, been held here, and I thought that, that it hadn't been that long, uh, we should have, I mean, it was successful then. I'm not seeing why it would be successful now. Well, I mean, data, yes, but if it's something that's worked, that, that works, uh, is it required for us to go back to the Economic Development Committee every time something comes up? Is, is what I'm asking. I mean, if that's part of the process, that anything that comes to the economic development, gotta go to the committee first, which just holds it up, uh, when you know that it is economically feasible.
Correct.
Then I don't see doing that every time. If that's the case, we can do that with everything that come, come before us. Thank you, Miss, uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Gregory Young.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam President.
Can anybody hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, let me see if I can do, uh, King Solomon here. Okay, um, I mean, we're not operating in a vacuum. So I kind of know what, I kind of know the source of some of this, uh, some of these sentiments. Madam President, I'm, I'm going to yield to your judgment on this. I'm just curious as to, maybe if we have time, if we can do a fresh economic impact study and expedite the whole process. You just tell me when we can run this through. We can run this through economic development? I guess I need to know, what is the usual turnaround time on this analysis that's performed so that we can realize what the return on our investment is?
We should be able to get that information before you vote at your, not Thursday, but your, two weeks from Thursday.
It has to lay over because it's an ordinance.
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
You can kind of?
We can advance it and we can also state with the economic impact study to be included before final adoption.
Okay.
And you can hold a meeting if you feel it's necessary within those two weeks.
Okay. And so, Ms. Brand, when do you, when do you think, if we, if we submit the application for the study, what are you, what are you thinking? That by the time we vote in a couple of weeks, it'll, it should be ready? We can put it on the fast track?
Yes, sir. We, we ask for that as a part of the application process and Gremlin is used to hold an event, so they ought to be able to get that turned around pretty quickly.
Right, because I do think it's important, you know, in this time that we're in, when we see some people are calling for transparency when it comes to everything that we do, while at the same time, we don't, we don't hear similar sentiments when it comes to essentially dismembering our entire federal government. We don't, they, they do all this stuff in secrecy. Nobody knows what's going on, but when we're talking about something as small as $100,000 here locally, we're going to subject it to the utmost scrutiny. I just think that, again, as I said several times last year, we need to be consistent with how we process information and how we conduct ourselves and how we develop our opinions about things. But thank you so much and again, I'll, I'll defer to your judgment on this matter, Madam President, and I think we can get it done.
Thank you. See, Commissioner Atkins has already spoke. Okay, well, I'm going to Commissioner Ron Corrigan and then I'll come back to you for a second time.
Madam President, I was going to call for a motion.
Okay, calling for the question.
Call for the question, I'm sorry.
Chair, second, somebody else taking?
I'll second.
Okay. All right, we have a call for the question by Commissioner Ron Corrigan and it's been seconded by Parliamentarian Thomas. The board is clear, please vote. I can vote.
And that motion carries with seven in support, three in opposition, and two absent.
Now we're voting on advancing.
And that brings us to the, yes, it is the motion to advance ordinance number 6254, I mean, I'm sorry, 6524 of 2025.
All right.
And Commissioner Greg Young, I'm sorry, it looks like it did not take your vote. Okay, thank you. And that motion carries with eight in support, two in opposition, and two absent and brings us now to the consideration of advancing Resolution 10 of 2025. That is a resolution amending Resolution 42 of 2024 to extend Cattle Parish's war on litter. And I do realize that I noticed the attachment was, for that item was coming up in an unusual format. If that is happening to you, that resolution extends the deadline. That is a motion that y'all, or, or the war on litter, initially y'all created it to last a month, then you extended it through 2024. This would extend it through the end of 2026.
Okay. Point of clarification, is there any reason why, is there a certain moratorium that is on, on this actual ordinance? Can it be indefinitely or do we need to state a date? And that's to Attorney Frazier.
Commissioner, I, I'm sorry, I didn't prepare this. So I don't see why it can't be indefinite. I'm not, I hadn't had an opportunity to look at the original resolution to see what it said, so I apologize for that.
Okay, I'm not the author of this resolution and I, I will support advancing it to Thursday. I just wanted some clarification about it. I know that it was asked during our public safety meeting and then you realized that it was not extended out throughout 2025, so I just wanted, I probably will make a motion to extend it indefinitely because litter is going to always be a problem that we have.
Absolutely. And in my recollection, I don't see where that would be a problem. I think it was just extended in the way that the author asked.
Okay. I see no one else on the board to speak. Please vote.
Advancing Resolution 10.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you like to speak, Commissioner Stefan Jones?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate it. I'd like to, globo, and advance.
And advance.
Yes, ma'am. If it pleases the body.
Absolutely.
10, or well, 11.3, 11.4, 11.5, 11.6, 11.7, and I like to remove 11.8, 11.9, and 11.10.
Okay, second. So it's been moved to englobo in advance. Resolution 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and you're removing 15.
Yes, ma'am.
And 11.9, the special resolution for remembrance of Judy Durham.
And 11.10.
And 11.10. Mr. Larry Ferdinand, okay? Commissioner Roy Barrell.
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to comment on 11.10. Larry Ferdinand, many of you may know Larry, may not, but just a little bit of his background, we don't have all of his, his information yet in order to do this resolution. But Larry Ferdinand was the president of the NACP here for a while. He was the director of community development, Shreveport Community Development. He also was the city councilman of District G, in which I took over later as city councilman. And he was also a member of my church, Galilee Baptist Church and, and one of my fraternity brothers, Alpha fraternity. Among other things, Larry's been a community leader for a long time and he just recently passed about a week ago and we don't have any details yet on his funeral, but he's going to be sorely missed. Thanks, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Barrell, for those remarks. See no other discussion? Please vote.
And that motion carries with ten in support, none in opposition, and two absent and brings us to your second round of communicating committee reports.
Okay, any commissioners on for second round communicates reports? All right, Commissioner John Atkins.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just wanted to comment, I, I wanted to share something with the body before that we cast our votes on the, the, the Shreveport Classic, but the question was called and I didn't have a chance to share my thoughts on that prior to the vote. So I was going to say that I'm, you know, I'm supportive of advancing it as long as we agree to, and I believe we have agreed to, but as long as we agree to an economic development study being done prior to we actually making the final vote on this issue. And were we good with that? Is that?
Yes, we are. I think that was the motion.
And whether, and whether it goes through committee or not, it doesn't really matter to me as long as we have access to that study before the final vote.
We'll make sure you have that in.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
That's all I had.
All right, Commissioner Chris Crackman.
Thank you, Madam President. And of course, the question was called on the issue in my district as well. Now, to talk about something being misrepresented or however long the, the truck stop had been opened or whatever, you know, the opinion of the author means nothing to me. I was at the ribbon cutting with Todd Hopkins. I was there. I talked to the developer. I talked to the mayor who doesn't even know your name. To, to raise, to raise taxes in somebody else's damn district is disrespectful.
Point of order.
Without one word said to the commissioner of that district.
Commissioner Crackman, will you please make all of your remarks to me, the chair, and not address them individually? Thank you.
You're raising taxes in my district to fund, fund things in the city of Shreveport to return it back to the tax roll in a shorter amount of time. So we can fund $100,000 to this classic or fund $100,000 to the Shreveport Property Standards or whatever that is. We're returning it back to the tax roll so we can have a slush fund for city commissioners off the backs of my constituents and the, no one spoke one word to me. And I tried to call and reach out and no one said one word to me. These are my constituents that we're raising sales taxes on and nobody bats an eye to vote yes to that. That's an embarrassment and that's about as disrespectful as it gets. I don't step not one foot in nobody's district and put ink on paper about anything that affects anyone else's district because you are your district's representative. Why would I do that? This is an issue that we've visited already and that had been ongoing for several years. When, when Commissioner Hopkins was in this seat is when it came up. That's how old it is. And now we just bring it up out of thin air and it passes without any contention. And the last session we had, there was massive conversation about folks trying to get out of here early. Yet here we are englobo-ing more than half of the agenda. So when we talk about hypocrisy, look in the doggone mirror. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Crackman. Commissioner Victor Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. I was going to make comments, but I think I'll exercise emotional intelligence and not respond to the, the outbursts that we just exhibited in these, in these chambers. However, I will say that once again, and I will stand on that, that even as well as today, the, the details of this situation have been misrepresented, misrepresented. Also that lies have been presented to this board on behalf of the owner of that establishment, on behalf of the citizens in that area, as well as other, as well as other representatives of the area. And with that, I'll yield, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Yes, ma'am. If we can, Mr. Clerk, do you have the vote on the englobo?
The vote can be pulled up if you give us just one minute.
Point of clarification, it was 10.
I'm sorry, I think my mic was off. The vote can be pulled up, yeah. It was.
It's 10.
It was 10 in support.
And how many in opposition?
None.
Are you?
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. I see no other commissioners on the board to speak. I do not have any additional comment cards. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mean adjourn.